We'll now call the November 14th City Council meeting to get, or to order. The first item tonight is public input. Anyone that has any public input, I guess, other than the budget because it is a public theory for the budget, so if there's anything else, anyone has any public input for?
Yeah, I have a question. So now that the parting referendum passed, I'm wondering what council steps are moving forward.
We'll have that on the agenda for the next meeting. My apologies, I forgot to get that on the agenda for this one, but it does on the agenda for the next one.
All right. So there will be a formal vote on that and...
Discussion, anyway. I don't know what the council's gonna do.
There's no vote on the floor or anything unless someone...
There's no motion.
There's no motion.
There's no proposal.
There really is nothing to do with it.
Yeah.
As far as I'm concerned, it's a dead issue.
Anything else from the public? All right, any members of council have any conflicts of interest with any of the agenda items tonight? No? Consent agenda for department reports, license renewal application, that's American Legion Post 15, approval of a quick claim deed, and that's for Jeffrey Burke in October 2016 financials.
Move the slate.
Any questions or anything on any of the reports or the financials? I just had one quick question for our fire chief here. Long-distance calls are down substantially this year from last year, according to this report. I don't know if this is right or not. And calls turned over are up. And I'm just trying to understand the correlation, what's going on. I mean, part of the deal of hiring additional fire...
And we've been three people down with illness. So all those shifts are being filled with overtime shifts, which takes away from the people that you can actually have, have to call back in. And the other side of that is we didn't have any summer help this year. There was nobody to put on to cover vacations and off time. We're working through that. We've got another school going on right now to get some more help from the volunteer side of it. So hopefully, we can have a strong staff this summer of summer help people to facilitate vacation time and time off from the regular staff so it doesn't keep depleting from our own call site.
All right. Anyone else? You have a motion to approve all, all those in favor? 2017 budget. We have a public hearing for the 2017 budget. And we'll go into the public hearing at 6:03. Anyone that would like to speak to council regarding the budget for 2017? Austin, do you want to run through the...
I certainly can if the council wishes.
Yep, me as well.
All right. So I'll go through page four of the budget, which is in front of the council, has a bit more information than I have for the packets. I'll read through that. So during the past several workshops on the 2017 budget, the city councils looked at the entire budgets of the times. Over that time, the council has decided they do not want to see a decrease in services and service levels, which is what would have happened if positions were eliminated. Council also decided they want to make wage adjustments for the non-union employees to adjust the face scales, so the midpoint of the scales, 100% of the average for similar positions in towns of population 6,000 to 10,000 across Maine. Changes in the budget presented here today that are different from the original budget presented are summarized as followed. We're removing 79,300 from the CIP budget with a breakdown below, 1,000 from general government computers, 500 from fleet vehicles, 1,000 from the parking lot reserve, 1,000 from assessing reserve, 1,000 from the library building reserve, 1,000 from the fire equipment reserve, 500 from fire department foam, 500 from fire department computer, 1,000 from fire department small equipment, 1,000 from fire and ambulance building reserve, 1,000 from the ambulance small equipment reserve, 1,000 from the police equipment reserve, 1,000 from the police car reserve, 1,000 from the police computer reserve, 1,000 from file digitalization, 50,000 from the LED streetlights, 1,000 from the Grams Road engineering, 1,000 from the public works equipment reserve, 1,000 from the streets and roads reconstruction, 500 from the rec center improvements, 500 from the rec van reserve, 1,000 from the community pool, 1,000 from the park improvement reserve, 1,000 from the rec equipment reserve, 500 from rec lawnmower, 500 from civic duty vacation, 1,000 from Collins Pond Rec, 100 from the ski shell program, 500 from the airport reserve, 500 from downtown infrastructure, 700 from the biomass boiler deck, and 5,000 from compensated abtensives. We're also taking 1,784 out of the library health insurance line and $913 out of the library salaries line. Given where we are at in the recruitment process for a library director, I don't believe a new director would be in position until at least the second payroll in January. With that being the case, this is one month's health insurance and one week's salary. In Department 18 Municipal Buildings, we are taking $1,000 from building maintenance and 1,000 from boiler maintenance. In General Government, we're taking 2,000 from the legal fees line. In Emergency Management, we're taking 50 from the miscellaneous line. We're proposing to raise the fire rates by 3% rather than 2% originally anticipated. That'll increase revenues by $1,200. Combined with all the CIP, these things add up to 7,947. Combined with the CIP reduction, that totals 89,247. With the voters of Maine approving the minimum wage increase, we have factored those changes into our budget. This only affects the parks and rec department, but this impact is about $13,000. Over the next several years, it'll be about $9,000 annually until 2020, at which time those increases are going to be tied to inflation. On November 9th, council consensus was that they did not want to see tax increase, and in order to accomplish that, they wanted to utilize the amount of revenues collected in excess of what was budgeted and the amount of money left over in the expense budget at the end of 2015. That amount is $427,070. Utilizing that from fund balance will leave us with approximately $806,570 in fund balance based upon what was there at the end of 2015. That leaves us with a fund balance of 8.4% of our expense budget, or one month's expenses. The minimum recommended amount to having a fund balance is 17%. Going back to 2005, we've never had a fund balance that low. We have not looked further back than that. By utilizing this much from fund balance, it'll also impact our cash flow. During the months of June, July, and August, the city typically experiences cash flow issues. In 2016, it was the first time in about seven years we did not have to delay paying bills, worry about making payroll, or having to take out a tax anticipation note. That was in part, anyway, because of the position of our fund balance in 2016. A quick comparison for cash flow from 2013, you can see in 2016, our low point was just $1,068,000. Previously, we'd been as low as $211,000 for cash on hand. On November 9th, council discussed potentially setting aside any money unexpended and revenue collected above anticipated for 2016 to offset taxation in 2018 and doing that same thing going forward. That would certainly help for budgeting purposes, to know the amount of money available for that purpose going into the budget. If the council wants to do that, staff would recommend not letting those funds fall into fund balance every year, but rather setting up a dedicated reserve account for such purposes. However, staff believes that this plan would be more appropriate if the fund balance were in the 17% to 24% range. As stated in the original October 14th budget memo, I caution council against using fund balance to offset taxes in 2017. The budget tonight would require $40,000 in taxes over 2016, which is still nearly $87,000 less than what was collected in 2015. The budget numbers presented here tonight are updated to reflect those proposals.
Any questions from anybody on council or any questions from anyone that's here regarding I guess no one. I guess the one question I have, Austin, is where does the magic 17% figure come from?
Two months of expenses, 17%, or 16.67%.
And what is that? You say it's a recommended, I mean, is it recommended by you or recommended by MMA?
MMA, Government Finance Officers Association of the United States, the International City County Management Association generally accept accounting principles.
And so when they would recommend that 17% that you carry in your fund balance, what would the norm be that they would recommend that your debt load is?
I don't know what their recommendations are.
I mean, I understand, you know, you're saying about 17%, but I also understand that I think we're kind of unique here from a municipality standpoint. I mean, I look down the road and somebody's got almost $10 million, you know, that they have out in bonds or debt or whatever. We have a capital improvement program here, which I think, as I stated last meeting, may not be perfect, but at least we have one. And we're putting money away into that capital improvement program for future purchases that we're planning on, whereas a lot of municipalities don't do that. I think our other neighbors here in Limestone are, you know, geez, they gotta buy a loader for $165,000, and they haven't put anything away for it, so now they're talking about whether they really need to buy it or not. I also look at the fact that, I might look at it differently if we didn't have $3 million sitting here in the bank, which is, I don't know, it's gotta be three or four months of our expenses. So I don't, you know, I don't know why that 17% would be a number that we'd be worried about. I mean, I don't know. Council's worried about it. I'm not worried about it, that we don't have that here. If we didn't have a capital improvement program, if we had a big debt load like most other municipalities, not just a few, but most of them, and if we didn't have $3 million sitting in the bank, yeah, I might be more than willing to go along and think, yeah, we should probably carry more than what we are right now. But as it stands right now, due to our circumstances, and that's just due to good management here in the past, how the city has been running, not taking on the big debt loads and putting money away for the future, and because of that, I'm not worried that we only have $800,000 sitting there. And that's just my opinion. There may be a lot of people disagree with me, but that's the way I see it. Anyway, back to the budget. Anyone want to speak about our budget here tonight? Did we have anyone here last year to speak about our budget? Nobody's watching anymore, I don't think. Nobody even knows what we're doing here, so... Anybody from council want to say anything? If not, I'm gonna...
I agree with your, I agree with your comments on, I mean, maybe the $3 million is locked in for, how long is it locked in for?
Another three and a half years.
It's locked in for as long as we want to let it be locked in. We can get it tomorrow if we want it.
Right. But worst comes to worst, we could borrow from it, too. So I agree with you on that.
I would like to say something on that, though.
Yep, go ahead.
I still believe, like I said last week, that we do need to establish a cap, whether it be 17%, you know? I think that discussion needs to be had, and then that way, everybody knows going into every budget season what it's gonna be. And it does provide some latitude of flexibility and not worry about going across the street to the bank for today, tomorrow. Okay? You want that money to work for you as long as you can.
Yeah.
Okay? Thank you.
I'll agree with you on that. The only thing I see on this budget is there's no attempt at any point to try to reduce expenses at all. I mean, even if it's a small amount, 50,000 or 100,000, are we just gonna keep going ahead with the budget every year and saying, this is what we need? How do we adapt to do it without any...
Right.
Without any saying, you know, we can, we need to take $100,000 out of here somewhere, whatever that number may be. That's just the way I look at it.
You're talking about reducing taxes.
Or reducing the expense, I mean, reducing expenses, or at that point.
No, that would probably end up reducing taxes.
Reducing taxes.
The budget presented on the 9th would have reduced some of those expenses.
That's... I'm going with that.
All right. Anything else? Close the public hearing at 6:14. Next item is junkyard permits. Manager, please.
We've received applications for junkyard permits from companies listed below. The code enforcement officer reviewed the applications and noted inspections under below. Gilbert Selvage, March Towing, and Amy Sike, we know major changes from last year, and for any of them, recommended renewal of the license. Council means to have a public hearing on this topic after that council can take action.
That's all we have done, was just the three, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
So we'll go into the public hearing at 6:15. No one here to speak from any of those? No problems or anything from our, when these were inspected and checked?
Just the one condition that I placed on the Gilberts. Just asking to clean up the old tractors and farm equipment that strewn along Albert Road. It's kind of set back in the woods. When the chief and I did the inspections, that was the only thing we noticed.
And has that been done? Yes?
It's a condition of the permit.
Okay.
It's been, it should be noted on the back of the permit, the sign.
So Gilbert Selvage would have a change from last year in that being cleaning up the equipment on the side?
Yeah, there's a couple of old trucks and some, it looks like armed equipment, but it's some of it's overgrown. It's probably been there a while. But it is something that the chief and I felt like he should clean up and put it behind. The idea is for it to be outside of public view, hide it from the public view. And it's right along the right way of Albert Road, so that's what we're asking you to do.
Anyone else have anything to say in the public hearing for these permits? Hearing's closed at 6:17. Do we have to make a change on the motion, Austin, to take into account this, what has to be done?
Yeah.
Can we get a motion here?
Yeah. I move that we approve the salvage permits, according to staff, in accepting Gilbert has some conditions to meet in order to be compliant.
All those in favor? Opposed? Moratorium on marijuana dispensaries.
A site design review application's been submitted for a marijuana dispensary, and given the recent results of the election, staff believes a moratorium on marijuana dispensaries is necessary to ensure the city is well-positioned to protect the health, welfare, and safety of all citizens. As such, two ordinances are being proposed tonight. Ordinance number 12 is an emergency ordinance as allowed by the Charter in section 2.13. This ordinance can go into effect immediately after passage by the City Council. Emergency ordinances are good for 60 days unless extended by the council. Ordinance number 13 is a regular ordinance stating the same things as the emergency ordinance, however, since the regular ordinances do not go into effect until 30 days after adoption, this ordinance cannot go into effect until late December. It's recommended the council approve ordinance number 12 tonight. It's further recommended the council introduce ordinance number 13 tonight in a public hearing scheduled for November 28th for that ordinance.
Question? Moratoriums usually, we have up to 180 days with another 180-day inspection based on blah, blah, blah. And based on the current status of that particular bill, wouldn't it behoove us to make the timeframe on the ordinance 180 days versus the 60 days?
By Charter, emergency ordinances are only good for 60 days.
Oh, you're gonna, okay.
For the ordinance number 13, it'd be 180.
Well, couldn't we...
Or minus, yeah.
Okay. So are we going to seek...
So the first 180-day clock would start today if council passes it. So the second, ordinance number 13, would continue the original 180-day clock.
When does the law want to affect?
We don't anticipate the state being, completing all of their rules and regulations and everything until late spring at the earliest, and that assumes the governor allows it to go forward and the recount and everything else. So if everything goes as it normally would for these types of things, we wanted to anticipate it to go into effect until May or June.
And are we opposed to marijuana dispensaries? Isn't that the first question?
I think that's something that the council and the planning board need to look at as part of this whole discussion, and definitely look at the results of the, of that question here in Carriboo, is looking to that for guidance for what the citizens of Carriboo thought of it.
We are gonna have a public hearing on it as well, so...
About the next meeting on 28th, right?
Yeah. So how was the vote in Carriboo? Yes or no?
I don't think it passed in Carriboo.
Yeah. I don't remember the exact numbers, but it failed.
Can I get you the exact numbers?
Yeah, you got it on my phone.
Right on the website.
You got my Gmail.
Okay, so the first one we want to do is 12.
So we had a motion?
No, we could have introduced ordinance, right?
Oh, I thought you had made a motion. Or you just asked a question.
To answer Mr. Martin's question, we had 1,510 people in favor and 2,523 against.
That sends a pretty clear message.
So we're gonna send our business to Prescott?
That's up for council discussion when we get to that point.
Yeah. I guess Prescott voted against it, too, as far as legalizing.
I think we're just pretty much voting against the ordinance.
So ordinance 12, that just puts us on hold till we have a public hearing.
Ordinance 12 is an emergency ordinance which would go into effect today. Ordinance 13 would be introduced, we'd have a public hearing on that, just like the typical ordinance process. So two weeks from tonight, we'd have that public hearing, and that would go into effect late December.
So we need, we need a motion to pass the emergency ordinance here, ordinance 12, first.
I just wanted to, excuse me, I just wonder what the hurry is, if nothing's going to happen until spring.
Yeah, that's what's my question. Why do we need to do this now?
What's it holding up?
We've got one application for a dispensary already submitted.
Yeah, but we can't act on that, right, until, until the state?
You need to do this.
Because that, right now, would be easy enough for a dispensary for medical marijuana, once the state gets it all done, to change their sign on their door and say it's, scratch out the word "medical" and just be marijuana.
We need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 12.
Second. All those in favor? Passed. Now we need someone to introduce number 13.
Mayor Aiken.
Yes.
I'll introduce ordinance 13, 2016, series City of Carriboo County, district, state of Maine, ordinance regarding marijuana dispensaries.
We've scheduled a public hearing for November 28th. Next item, new school project building permit. I think we just talked about that a while ago.
We've been asked whether or not the city would be willing to waive the building permit fee for the new school project. According to the architect, the, according to the architect for the project, the Department of Education typically expects the permit fees to be waived. If the fee is not waived, it would be paid for as part of the local share of the project. Using the current projected construction cost for the new school, that building permit fee would be approximately $165,000. I do not anticipate a building permit being applied for and issued until 2018, as the project timeline does not have the project going out to bid until late 2017 at the earliest. For council's information, staff is also considering having third-party inspectors do the project inspection to insert the, ensure the city is protected throughout the process. Staff does not have the time or the expertise to complete all of the inspections that will be required as part of a building construction of this size. Third-party inspectors would be much better suited to do this than the current staff would be. If the council's willing to waive the building permit fee, we would need a motion authorizing that.
Question?
Yeah.
I, I might have misunderstood some of our early discussions like this, but I thought that the school project was gonna be totally funded by the state and that we would have no match or anything like that, and now I see that this would be part of our cost.
Correct.
Okay.
Along with some other costs, is there?
There's a few other costs right now, and they'll talk about this more at the straw poll on Thursday night at 6 o'clock, but it seems like there'd be about $300,000 of local share cost, from what I've heard.
Oh, not including this 160?
Including that 160.
Including the 165.
Yeah. So the building permit fee would make up...
So that would be based on outside the scope as presented at the beginning of this process, then? In other words, they were just gonna build a school, and now there's additional...
To the Department of Education specs.
Right. To the, okay, so if it was built to those specifications, there would be no share from the community, correct?
Unless the city required a municipal building permit.
Does that say that in their specs?
I've never seen the specs, but I've heard a quick link. They might be on the DOE website, but if the DOE does not pay for municipal building permits, that's required, or a local share cost.
Counsel, reduce.
Yeah, so we say that staff is not gonna have time to make those inspections, and we're gonna hire a third party to do those inspections? Is that a fair statement, then?
It'd be up to the architect or the engineers, the people constructing the project, who pay for the third-party inspections.
Okay. So we're not, we're not paying for those third-party inspectors, the city?
It'd be a pass-through, most.
I mean, 20% of a project goes to the architects, and part of that is they have a clerk of the works.
Correct.
That does the, I mean, I don't think we have to worry about that part of it.
The clerk of the works certainly protects the architects, but staff is worried about what protects the city.
From what?
Just like any other building that we, yeah.
Yeah. I've worked on a lot of construction, and I never had two sets of inspectors I had to hide from.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't get it. That's the staff's concern.
Right.
No.
If the council wishes us not to get third-party inspectors and just trust the clerk of the works, we can do that.
That's where the liability would lie.
We're not paying for the third-party inspectors, I'm correct, so I mean, it doesn't really...
I mean, in my line of work, we, you know, we provide, the engineer provides inspection services for the municipality.
And that's part of your bid, right?
It's part of our, part of our bid, correct. Which is what I'm, I just want to make sure I understand that correctly, that that's what's gonna take place.
Like Austin said, it's not that we've seen any specs for anything, and every time we ask questions, we just get nothing.
So we don't know the answer to that question?
We do not know the answer.
The conversations we had, they indicated that they assumed we would waive that.
That was the first sentence.
Well, there are two different issues there, the way I see it.
Right.
There's, a permit is needed, there are inspection fees, two different things.
Yes. So the clerk of the works for the inspection would be there on behalf of the architect and the RSC, since the RSC is the architect's client. And if the council is comfortable with that being the check and balance, staff is fine with that, that's a council decision. But the staff is considering and looking at third-party inspections to make sure from a liability side, the city is covered.
Well, to me, the school department should be making that decision. My concern was is that we were gonna spend out of our pocket money to hire a third-party inspector. That's what I'm concerned about. That's usually what our fees more or less cover, our permit fees. So I would want to make sure if, if that was the case, that we are at least covering our costs for those inspections. But it doesn't sound like...
That would be the idea of the building permit.
I'm sorry?
That would be the idea of the building permit. We had to collect that money.
If, yeah, and so my point to that story is if we do decide to do that, I could see collecting a fee that would cover those costs.
But I guess if they have the inspectors and they're qualified inspectors, I don't know why the city wants to go behind them and re-inspect.
And exactly.
Because the liability would, would rest on their shoulders if anything happened, but it could come back on the city if you re-inspected on top of their inspection.
And those concerns should be brought up before we vote, not decide after. I mean, if you have concerns, you should bring those up Thursday.
Those are brought up to the building committee. The building committee has talked about that.
The other thing, too, to note, is that there's quality control in one of these projects and quality assurance. And quality control is a contractor's responsibility to make sure that they're doing what they should be doing. And quality assurance is more of an independent review of what's going on. The same thing. So you've got, you know, you've got, you've placed a bunch of concrete, you've usually got two people testing that concrete.
Right. And that was one of the things that I asked him when he was here on Friday, was like for special inspections, concrete, steel, things that, I don't even know if you'd have anyone local that would do those types of inspections.
They're done all the time.
And I said, well, who do you have do that? Send me the information about them so I can independently look at those contractors you hire for special inspections and...
I think we're sticking our nose in something that's not our business, right?
To me, it's the school's responsibility, in my opinion.
I mean, it's not like this is the first school ever built. There's a lot of people out there know what they're doing. I mean, it's not like this is the first school ever built, there's a lot of people out there know what they're doing.
Yes, and one of the things I said was, we can't be the only city that you've built a school in that, that has these concerns. And again, I get nothing, like, they, they don't wanna talk about it. They wanna talk about their beautiful school that they're building.
Who's they, are they a building committee or?
The architects.
Anyway, getting back to the actual question. Typically, the Department of Education expects the permit fees to be waived. Well, typically, I expect the state government to pay the revenue sharing in that they promised to the cities. And is that gonna get me anything? No. So, uh, as far as waiving the building permit, I'm not in favor of it. We all know it's gonna end up being a break-even deal anyway, but?
Break-even how? Hey, it's just coming out of the city's pocket, right?
Yeah, but it'll come back.
We'll get the revenue, we're gonna pass on.
You'll get the revenue, it'll come back on the school for the taxes. But, yeah, I'm still not in favor of waiving it, just a principle if nothing else.
If the building permit is, is to pay for the inspections, and we're not going to inspect it, if they're gonna inspect it, then why?
Do we need a building permit?
We don't need the building permit fees.
Again, it goes to my point there that there's, there's usually two inspections.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a quality control and a quality insurance inspection in these types of projects.
And if you give it away, but now when something comes up, you're, then you're gonna pay more.
We don't have to do anything now, can't we table that for now? And also, the RSU is a separate entity now. Why are we even getting involved in whether or not they have inspections?
Because we are the issuer of the permit.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, yeah, okay, if we issue the permits, but why do, why is it up to the, to the council to decide whether or not they have an inspection behind the, the inspection that is provided by the, by the Department of Education?
Because normally, when you're issuing a permit, you're also issuing, the code enforcement officer is gonna follow up on the issuance of that permit to make sure that the building is built to the specification and in accordance with your building codes and local codes and so on and so forth. And that's how the practice normally works. Now, you're looking at a little different situation here.
Did we do that when we built the rec center?
You'll have to ask Jim, but I think that, that was pretty much taken care of on his end of the deal.
Just like these guys.
At that point, it was the, the city's project.
Right.
The only, the only thing about charging them a permit is that if we don't charge them a permit, we're giving Stockholm and Limestone a break, again. Whereas, a certain percentage of the fees of a permit would come from those two towns, so that's it. So I can see both sides of that.
Counsel, McDonald?
I, I know the answer to this question already, but there, there are some entities that, uh, permit fees are waived. Does the school department fall underneath that category?
We've always charged them for their building permits, sign permits, demo permits, whatever they have.
But, yeah, but according to the ordinance, there's some entities that are allowed, you know, that you don't have to issue the permit or the fees are charged. Do they fall into that category or one of those categories?
I would have to check.
Okay. Could, could we just look at that, please? Or I can look it up.
I don't believe, I don't believe the airport is ever gonna waive a fee or assess a fee, but I think we've put a permit in, or we're about to as well, so.
I mean, the airport is still city, I mean, the RSU is not a community school anymore.
Correct, I get that, I do get that point, yep.
You know, and when Gary did his project, he came in with his permit application, but we didn't charge him a fee.
I do know the military and the federal government are exempt. I don't know about the school district and whether it would be classified as a state entity or not. So Ken and I will determine that.
Okay, I, I, I just would like that answer, that's all.
I was using the language, I just don't recall exactly what it stipulates.
Me too, but it's been a while since I've read that.
Could you come back with the percentage of the fees that would come from limestone and Stockholm?
We can get some information from the?
I mean, I'm sure it's like maybe 10 or 15%.
I don't know what the breakdown is for what we pay versus they pay for the school budget. They might be able to give that percentage figure on Thursday night, and we just apply that to the 165.
I would make a motion that we table with until we get a little bit more information.
I did ask them about being able to meet with the quality control, like on a weekly basis, to try to find out what, what are they doing that week, you know, and kind of shadow them, because I mean, it's a good learning project for anyone. And I was told, eh, we don't really do that. I mean, it's, it's our job to decide if we permit it. But otherwise, it's gonna be, what are you doing here? Take your pink hard hat and go back to high street.
Do you want somebody shadowing your job?
They, they're more than welcome to.
You don't have an F rule?
I would love to have them come in.
I don't know.
I'm not, I'm not saying that it's a yes or no on anything. I'm saying, we're not really getting the information that we even need to know if our interests are being protected.
Maybe you need to ask that in the straw poll.
Well, we have tried to ask it. The only answer I've got to anything is that they're building it according to the 2015 building codes, which aren't enforced yet.
But if you, if you ask them in public Thursday night, in front of everybody, you might get a bit?
You think they'll roll their eyes at me there? Maybe not.
Then I'll roll my eyes back at them.
I don't know, just trying to get any specification are just, it's just not happening.
Are we gonna get people upset and jeopardize a $40 million project because of territorial issues?
Listen, this isn't a territorial issue. The architects will tell you, they are chosen based on their reputation with the Department of Education. But when that building is built, it's take, they take the low bid. So what does that tell you? I mean, there's, there's some room in there to be a little bit concerned about these people.
You don't understand construction.
I, I have to agree with her, I've seen a lot of building construction. I've seen, I do all kinds of low-bid building construction.
Yes.
And there are issues.
Yes, thank you, thank you.
The pellet stove, the pellet furnaces were a low-bid thing, look.
They were the only?
I just think it needs to be, the question needs to be answered, I think that's what it comes down to.
And then we have tried to ask that.
It's not an outrageous question?
No.
You wouldn't think so. Maybe we're just not at that point yet, or they have specifications on it, I don't know. But I just feel like the question needs to be asked, you know, if we're going to?
Can that question be asked at the next building committee meeting?
It's not until December, but it could be asked there.
It could be asked prior to that too, right?
Right, and I know that, uh, I, I guess I would not recommend we table the topic of the building permit fees, since they are trying to get their figures together for the straw poll vote. That is the number that they have to take to the Department of Education here within the next two to four-ish weeks, for them to approve a, a final budget. And, I mean, the final number is gonna be locked in. So if the council wants to waive or not waive, I think that decision should be made here tonight. And that really could be independent of whether or not there's inspections.
I'll make a motion to waive the, the building permit fee in the amount of 165.
Second.
You know, I'm gonna make a comment before we vote here. You can waive it, that means you aren't ever gonna get it, and it's not gonna be in the budget. If you don't waive it, it'll be in the budget. And if we end up having costs or anything else involved here from the city for inspections or whatever, at least we'll have gotten that $160,000 that we could use.
And I'll say that's my only concern about waiving it. I, I, in my opinion, it's coming out of this pocket or it's coming out of that pocket. I think that we just need to make sure that if we are gonna do inspections and they're gonna be third-party, that we do account for them.
And it would at least be receivable on the books and not out in la-la land.
So, yeah. And I don't know how to deal with that right now. There's only one way to deal with it.
But we only have one question we gotta answer here tonight, so. There is a motion to waive it, is there a second or?
It was seconded.
Yeah. If we do waive it, yeah, like Councilor McDougal just stated, it really, we'd be taking out of our own pocket if we're gonna do any third-party inspections.
We don't need third-party inspection.
If that's, if that's the next part of the motion where we don't require a third-party inspection, that staff is fine with that, if council wants to make that decision.
So is that two separate?
Anyway, we have a motion.
I have one motion, that's all.
All those in favor of waiving the building permit? Opposed? We don't waive the building permit. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, the building permit is dependent on any third-party fees that we are assessed.
So if we don't have third-party inspectors, we don't require a fee?
Correct.
Correct. So, okay, so the only, the fee will only cover the costs if there's inspections?
Correct.
Does that take into consideration staff time reviewing plans and that type of thing?
Absolutely.
So that would be a?
Any third, any third-party costs that we have, that we, that we get assessed? Based on that permit?
Not assessing any of our staff time to review it? I, I guess that's my question.
Just, just so we understand where we're at here. If we don't waive the fee, they're gonna put it in their budget.
Right.
They're gonna charge us back, or $165,000 to the city to pay. So?
Not the whole thing.
Well, I don't know, whatever it'll be. So why can't we just leave it the way it is now, where we haven't waived the fee? And if it does come in and go out, then it comes in and goes out, but at least we're covered. If anything is happening here in the meantime, at least we understand and have a point to argue on, rather than just saying, well, we don't know, it'll depend on this or that or the next thing.
I think it complicates it too much to add anything else to it, I think we should just leave it as it is.
I mean, right now, we're not waiving the building permit, that's passed. Why do we have to do anything more?
Because as a taxpayer, if I don't have to pay $165,000 out of one, why, why enforce that?
But if it, if they need the figure to do the budget, so that's gonna be in there.
Yeah.
So who are we gonna give it back to?
Couldn't it be refunded after it's all sitting there?
I made a motion.
Did you have a second?
I don't believe it.
No?
I didn't get one yet.
Motion fails.
Thank you.
Zoning change request.
Planning boards have received a request to change the zoning of 8 C and Craig from C2 to R1. The property has for a long time been a residential house. However, after the house burned down back in 2013, the owners did not rebuild within one year. For a zoning ordinance, a residential house would not be allowed to go back in the property at this point. Changing the zoning map to a residential district would allow it to be built there again. Currently, the property's zone Z2, but along the eastern property border, it's guarded by the R1 district, and that is on the next page. Planning board held a public hearing on this, the public hearing was advertised in the paper, notices sent to those living within 500 feet of the property. Planning board believes this is a reasonable request, voted to recommend it to the council, but they approved the request. Council would need to approve the change to the zoning map. Nobody came out at the public hearing that the planning board had.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor? Approved. Other business? Any other business? Upcoming meeting dates, we've got a council meeting on November 28th. We also have a council workshop on the 28th regarding broadband.
Five o'clock.
At five o'clock, which will be a public meeting as well, I guess. And we have a regular city council meeting on December the 12th. That's it? Other committee meetings or anything?
It's Thursday, 6 o'clock, CPAC.
Yeah.
Thursday, 6 o'clock.
Meeting's at 6, the vote's at 7.
Meetings at 6, what?
The vote's at 7.
Oh, okay. All right.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
All in favor? Were adjourned, thank you very much, everyone for coming.